As municipal council with our administration, 1235 on Tuesday, January 5th, 2016, in the city center conference room. Pretty big to my last minute of the field. You will just please note that this meeting is recorded. It will be posted to the Provo City website. Please be aware that the microphones are on the table and just because the noise of paper and other rust and objects. Further be aware that the recording is to pick up side conversations. To begin with a little call.
Brian Jones.
Kipson Tappel.
Hey, I'm your director.
Gary Minerton.
Dave Kinnock.
Dave Arden.
George Stewart.
Lynn Parker.
Tom Curtis.
And I'd like to welcome our new and newly elected members to the Provo City Assembly. Excited to look forward to our future job. We will be joined by Dave Stewart. We'll begin with the opening prayer by Ryan Harvey, our council of elders.
How do you, kind heavenly father, we are grateful for this opportunity to be gathered here together against public servants, staff members, elected officials. We are grateful for the opportunity to discuss the happenings in the city. We pray that as we, as council members, discuss, make decisions, as they, my spirit will be with them. Have a spirit of wisdom and be able to make decisions that will help take the city to greater heights. We are grateful for the weather which we've had and pray that we can have an enjoyable day. We say our prayers.
First item of the business is the approval of the minutes for October 6th, 2015 and November 17th, 2015 for an discussion.
Then move to approve.
Thank you for your second.
Second.
Thank you. I'll go to a term. First item for the second item is a proposal and discussion to have BYU grant program. We have to best study on the best use of grant tax dollars for our sections. And this will be presented by it says here, Curtis, so please introduce that.
My name is David Scott. I'm the development director for Grantwell. I am a second year MBA student at the mayor's school management at Brigham Young University. Along with me, we have Dr. Aaron Miller, our faculty advisor, and then Brittany Scott, who is the leader of a collaborative and artist in the community, Elliot Wilcox. Works with the, to know their stories, not press them. Grantwell is a student-run nonprofit consulting group housed in the Romney Institute of Public Management at Brigham Young University. Over the past eight years, we've advised over $30 million in public charity giving. And we work with large grant-making foundations and organizations, as well civic organizations, to help with program evaluation, allocation of funds, or foundation strategy. We have a group of graduate-level MPA, MBA students and nonprofit public management students as part of the team who work on the projects. And what we're proposing to do with the city is to provide a student team to advise the city on what other cities have been doing with the grant tax, to benchmark what has been done and what's been successful, what hasn't been done, to advise the city on how they might need to organize their arts council and their arts strategy to meet some of the goals they've had. Specifically, for example, goal 3.3 and vision 2030 to enhance the arts in the city. We'll also, so what we're asking for the city is to engage with us in that project. It's a free service that we provide. There would be no cost to the city incurred, except we do ask for a massive amount of time and access to appoint person within, most likely in the mayor's office to coordinate the progress of our project and then also to present our findings of our research.
Yes, as we go forward, we had a campaign that we presented to the residents here in Provo to help them feel comfortable with what we proposed. And how much will that play into your analysis? I think we need to make sure that we understand the promises that were made, the commitments were made by certain people at certain times to where these funds we go.
Right.
And how much will that play into your analysis? Do you throw that out or do you say this is what other cities are doing? You don't, it doesn't matter what you did.
No, that's a good question. We wouldn't strive to dictate the percentage of funds, the split, whether it needs to be 88, 12, is my understanding of kind of what's the parks and what is the arts. What Grantwell proposes to do is, if you're going to give that 12%, how do you need to give that 12% most effectively? Now, when that measure was passed, when Proposition 4 was passed, it was about a 55 to 45% margin. And one of the chief complaints against the proposition was the parks are already doing so well. 91% of our citizens feel like the parks are either in excellent or great condition. Therefore, if this proposition will continue and succeed in the future, it's likely that much of the impact that will have will come from that. So how are we going to use that 12% most effectively? That's what Grantwell will provide as context around the discussion of how can the city get the biggest bang for their buck? And also, the second half of that would be, how can the city effectively and thoughtfully evaluate the impact that they are having to the arts? Hopefully that answers your question.
I think that helps.
I didn't know there was a specific 12, 88 somewhere. I'd like to see that when that was, when this was. It was mayor's proposal. It's actually in the, well, I think it was. There's nothing formal at this point. It's my understanding that's been discussed by the council and the mayor leading up to the rap tax discussions or sort of putting on the ballot. But prior to, part of that public information campaign, I believe indicated that it would be about 12 to 15% here on.
Could you give us, just give us that agreement, that's on. Well, I thought I had a fine figure of how it would be. It would be a stable compartment.
So our, our budget committee had discussions and we brought some of that discussion to the council. We did talk about, the council did decide that we wanted to focus some of the rap tax money on existing infrastructure, taking care of what we have and parts of a long list of things that they, that needed to be repaired but weren't, that they weren't able to get to because of funding. And so that, the focus was, let's take care of what we have with this rap tax instead of building new things that we may not be able to maintain. Let's make sure we're taking care of what we already have. And that's why a large portion of that was to recreation. And so it's interesting that you say that most of the citizens felt, that didn't vote for it, felt like our parks were in good shape. And I don't know if that was a survey or what you're referring to, but.
That was a general survey for the parks or having nothing to do with the rap tax. That was a, a survey that came out of our situation. It wasn't against the rap tax.
But in the argument against the rap tax, that was brought up as, as part of their convention was that our parks are already in good shape. Why should we spend that much? And Grantwell won't pretend to say where that line should be. What we hope to do is to provide the council and the city with some context around, some benchmarking around where other cities, what they have done, what they have found effective, and how they've organized themselves strategically and legally to effectively give the money that they have appropriated for the arts in that city. And then also how to measure the impact that we are having. That's what, that's what the Grantwell team will be able to provide, is that information to contest.
So with your experience with other cities, you perhaps give us an idea on how they got the biggest bang for the buck? I mean, there's ways to spend money, but some ways are more invisible. The public may see or appreciate them better. Certainly the arts have been disabled and neglected. I mean, we perhaps see the impact there more easily, but there are both clear ways that we can spend it on many parks and rap that will also be appreciated at the same.
And I think, I think this could be really, really helpful for us because as we tried to articulate, what do we want to see? What does the community want to see with the arts? It was kind of hard to articulate exactly where we needed to improve and what would be most appreciated when it came to the arts. It was, I think, unfair assessment there.
Yeah, I think we felt like we did, parks, we had a spreadsheet with very specific needs and dollars assigned to those. And the arts was a little bit more nebulous, what kind of arts, which organization. And then one thing to add and mention that I would bring to that on is, and then let's measure the impact of that to decide next year if that was a good decision. How do we measure that? What's our criteria to decide if that would be good?
So it was mentioned during the campaign and the election for the vote on Prop 4, that the money for arts would go to the Sundance Film Festival here at Covey Center for Children. And so does 12%, is there still Wiggler Room? And there were some things that were already articulated from the arts committees or whatever.
Yeah, I think so. What we, what we kind of talked about in various terms, because here you have the parks were very specific and the arts was various terms, is that we, we had, I know that chart's $150,000. 50 of that, and they would do Covey for arts, additional arts program. 50 of that to the Library of British Arts Program. 50 for potential festival. That would be one of our proposals too. The Covey's 50, I would accumulate that for a couple of years. Okay, we put it, needed to bring that festival into our city. And then we kind of just stopped the discussion. And then we really added, there was not much discussion beyond that. I was kind of right there and said, well, that's our best swing. And I think what I would hope from this is clear definition of what's a good idea. We feel like we, we're committed to our residents. And the situation currently is a stronger, a lot of the resources program, how it's being spent. Lack of some permission. We are looking at that very various.
How would the existing art board and those organizations play into the process?
Do you want me to answer?
Go ahead.
Okay, sorry. We've had some really good discussions with them. Notice Elliot and others in the back room below. Thanks for coming. With the group and the community. And I've challenged them to organize themselves into a real organization that would promote arts in the city. And I view that as much the same way I view Bicycle Committee, the Sustainable Community, that they would lobby us for things, direction, vision of arts. Probably very influential in that, but that's their role. Shape art use, select officials. As they, as they got themselves organized together, we do that they have discussions with. How is this viewed as an official organization by the city? How that's moved up and tables and that would develop some of that. As if they actually make, make strides towards that type of organization to build themselves together to have that voice.
Just wanted to point out, the first version that we saw, I think only had about 4% allocated to the arts. And we provided feedback from residents. They'd like to see a little more. I just want to say, appreciate the administration for this. Allocation there, so it makes a lot of sense to me. Gathered from the movement to, to help this thing help to contribute.
I'm trying to add, looking north for the city forum and how they distribute their money has always been a little frustrating. Having this group collapse, so here's best practices. Here's where all of that rights. And here's where it needs to be a little bit better. I think it would be very valuable to us to just start with that. Hopefully not like six letters. So it's my impression that in the code, it says we should be having an arts council. Is that correct? And we don't really, we don't. And so are you proposing to reconstitute that as per code or do something other?
Maybe, man, I didn't ask before you, but part of this Grantwell study will be to identify how other cities have established their arts council. Are they separate nonprofit 501(c)(3)'s that have a contract with the city? Are they other, do they give, does the city give funding specific to non-art's council boards and so forth? So the Grantwell project will help kind of benchmark what other cities in the area have been doing about that and then provide some educational context to the city. These are your options. This is what the law states. These are what other cities have done to address that. And then ultimately allow the city to choose what would be best for the city having all that information.
I agree, it's time to reevaluate that. If the former arts council was extremely successful and helpful in bringing about the code center, now it's time to reevaluate the model. It might be that that's it, or it might be, it might be something sort of, sort of empty of code change, possible.
I'm curious if the expectation is to look at only Utah cities or are we going to look outside our state as well?
That's a great question. And that would be at the city's discretion. And that's why we would request at least a point person that we can communicate with. As the project unfolds, we want to make sure that we are addressing the needs of the city council as well as the mayor's office. And so if you would prefer to look at cities only within Utah, Utah County, or nationally, we could do so with the understanding we don't have an infinite amount of time. And so we'll just need to make sure that we focus on what's most desired from the city and what's capable.
So are you going to look at select communities like Utah County or all of the ones in Utah County? I, in particular, hoping that you would spread that.
Okay. We definitely could do that. We have actually worked with Grantwell in, as far as the care tax and or we did advise them on the specific piece on the RFP process that helped streamline that and it reduced the administrative burden on that. We'd be happy to look at Salt Lake City's app tax as well as Springville or Lehigh, which also passed in Proposition 3 was similar to the Provo City's.
The timing on this is really perfect. This third semester starting, we would be wrapping up about April.
And the collection of the fund won't begin until April 1st.
So we're hoping the council is excited to do well about this.
Did I have any questions?
Point person, who, who, how do you see this being put together?
Well, actually, we have. We've already had an opportunity to express some things that we would like to see out of this. And the more the council can express that, the more this will reflect the role of the council. On the one hand, as you make it too formal, it would be so slow to get the information that we don't. So it might be good if you, the point person within the council is to do with that, represent the council, carry the role of the council back the rest of the time. If you don't have a lot of time to go back and forth because it will be quickly done.
Curtis, may I ask? So I, I can be heard on the faculty director for the Grantwell program. When we did the project forums, city, there was a specific city council that was assigned to the Grantwell to be a point person for that. And that allowed the team to be able to ask questions, get more feedback and say, that project was, by the way, an awesome experience for our students. That's why we do this for free, to create such an opportunity and so for our students to get firsthand work experience. And so whichever, if the council decided to appoint a representative to work with the team, we appreciate that opportunity as far as the benefit of the students. They get to work with whoever's appointed and gain professional experience.
Mr. What kind of rationale do you have for the council? Can you just go ahead?
It works quite a bit. We're kind of moving forward with it, but we want the council to go some more. I just have the, just got the motions, so there's really no motion. I think that's up to the chair or she wants a motion to support it.
So it's not required?
Well, I don't think it's required for them to be a motion for the administration to do whatever they want to do with the proposal. If the council wants to recognize that they're interested in getting the feedback, they could make a motion to support. They wanted to, if they wanted to make a motion to appoint someone to be a liaison to represent the council's interests in the process, you could be that. So no, there's, there's a number of motions that could be made. There's not one that's absolutely necessary.
I do have a question. So Mr. Wilcox, I'm with Ms. Scott. Are you, are you both students as well? Will you be part of this? Okay.
We're citizens here in Provo. So for example, at the executive track, there are some very strange questions to try to talk around with us, with the year-round program being around the state. And so as citizens, we're just very interested in making sure that we have the opportunity to have arts here in our community, in our community and to make sure there is impactful and outstandingness. They should be bringing it by bears. So no, we're just interested and excited to be involved in helping arts come to Provo, basically. This is a Grantwell program. They would be the ones. When they heard that we were interested in arts, they did approach us saying, if you can provide some help, we said, well, this would be a great opportunity for the city.
When you mentioned your occupation, I just wonder what the intention was.
Yeah, we are just citizens who love the arts and are excited that they're going in a greater degree to our city.
Well, I'd like to know if there's interest in being a council liaison, if there's interest in that capacity.
I spent 20 years working with these guys. I was simply, had seven years of cocaine and tabaccio and really 20 years there working with all the different groups who were simply like simply going over the conversation.
Other than this, would you be interested in?
I'd support Dave on the arts. I have been attending all the, all the parks recreation board meetings. And so, you know, and I'm glad to participate. I would like some instruction because I know on our council, we have different opinions on how that rap tax should be used and whether it should be used at all. And I don't want to lose.
I was thinking it's nice to be on the arts side and you on the arts side, if you'd like to share.
I'm glad to do whatever, but I just, I would like some specific instructions on what we would be doing as representatives of the council because we don't speak for the council as individuals, but we do, we can give input.
So operationally, the way we're going to plan on it, worst thing is, is the team would probably meet with you either in person or via phone, most likely via phone, about twice a month, maybe 15 to 20 minutes to update you on the progress of the research that they've been benchmarking, studies that they're doing. And then also to get a feedback that you might have. Or for example, if, if along the process and as we're researching other cities and we find a handful of other cities that might be more interesting to you than Lehigh or than Salt Lake City, for example, you can kind of redirect, well, why don't you focus your time on what's most important or what's most desired. But so that would be about the nature of those interactions, about 15 to 20 minutes every other week or maybe about once a month to kind of just touch bases with the team, give them, give them some feedback and instruction. And then also just be willing to, hopefully, we'd love to be able to present the entire seat board at the end in April. If that is not a possibility, then please be able to present to our members accordingly.
No question. Are we talking about program specifically the arts, like not parks?
Correct. So.
Okay, so then it would be me necessarily if I was just going to focus on the parks. I support that even that.
I just had to ask a question, Brian.
If the council does ultimately change the amount of funding as the recommendation is going to be fluid enough that they can be adaptable to the amount of funding? Or is it going to be very tied into the amount of?
No, I think.
Preliminary polls or what have to do with that.
Right. I envision the recommendations that the team will be given will, will be more flexible. Recommendations that anticipate the team will be given will be more around what is the proper structure that the city should pursue or what are just the options of organizing itself? And then also what are some strategies that they can employ as far as building the arts in the city? And then how to evaluate the effectiveness on that? The, where that line is drawn, 88, 12, I think we'll do, we'll benchmark that against the other cities, but that's, that won't be essential if that goes up again.
So I think the focus just on those communities that have a rap tax and are implementing, using that money? Or if there's a city that has a strong arts program but doesn't have the rap tax?
How are they doing? Well, we could, I can envision us doing both. More specifically, I would envision the team focusing on the cities that have done the rap tax or something similar. And then if, in the course of the investigation, they find one or two cities that have done something successful, they can provide a spotlight or a profile on that. I, obviously, we're not going to be able to do a census of every innovative idea or program. I anticipate probably between six to eight different cities that we'd be able to profile and kind of benchmark against. So whether that's, you know, five that have a tax similar to the rap tax and one or two that, that have innovative programs or four and four, however that falls out. And that would be, you know, how that shapes, how that turns out would be under the direction of the city council, of the chairperson or coordinator. As we're going along, as we find the information to be more useful, we can kind of refine and focus on yours that are most helpful.
Any more questions, Mr. Stewart? Or discussion?
I would make a motion that we express, express support for this study and if they agree, our council will be able to.
Can I connect?
Connect. This is going to be a tough two years. Thank you.
Thank you. First, a motion that Mr. Minerton and second by Mr. Small. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Appreciate your willingness to. Thank you very much.
Actually, can I just make a comment?
Please do.
This is a, this is a phenomenal program and doing this for the city is a phenomenal opportunity. We've worked with a lot of great clients over the years, Walmart Foundation, Course for Good Foundation, Perpetual Foundation, we have a lot of great friends and very excited that we have that opportunity. We're looking at this now as well. So I'm looking to get that opportunity. We create something for our students that they can carry around.
Thank you. Thank you and your students as well. This is a huge for us. I'm wondering, do you have something?
No, I grabbed them on the side, so if you screen anyway, I can be helpful on this. Students, we can speak to experience for everyone.
The next item business is consideration of the creation of a proposed RAP council prosperity committee focused on city development processes and economic development policies. And this item is introduced by council members.
Thank you. We're a little bit behind today, and I'll try to make up a little ground here because I'm actually going to call for a vote on this today for two reasons. So anyway, can we pull up the mission statement? Do we have that available? It's not critical, but the two reasons that I'm only just looking for some very preliminary feedback today are, first of all, you can have a development, our team is going to be a big long list of suggestions that I just haven't had time to digest yet, so we'll start through that and see. But, well, thanks, that's something also to bring back to you. And the second thing is, I guess when we form a committee, we should probably also say who's going to be on it. It occurred to me that until we kind of lay out all the committees, somebody might not be sure where you want investors on, whether you want to be developing this or developing the other stuff. But just a quick high level, and I may be looking at how you feel about the concept, literary thought, if it's something that you're interested in. But there are three pieces to it. The first paragraph is just kind of explanatory, that kind of, it's kind of introduction, ties it in more across various sections of the version 2030 document, which covers both traditional economic development, also talks about our economic processes. Important sort of process there. So the first piece of it, which is the second paragraph, is partnering with the administration to review the city's long-term economic development goals and strategies, basically looking for legislative opportunities, not looking to interfere in any way. I know there's concerns about that, but, you know, develop the team right now. No intent there at all, but.
Dave, could you give me an example of legislative opportunity that maybe is already kind of been pointed out, and you're thinking to spur this?
On this piece, I don't have a good example at the moment, but zoning, the board, the biggest system opportunities for, for developing a certain area, and we have to write something in place. We helped the zoning conference a few weeks ago, I asked those vendors, how can the city council be able to handle this process? They're just basically looking at your regulatory environment, making sure it's streamlined and that. Sometimes I think, when you have a team that's down in the day-to-day operations, they're figuring, thinking about some of those things, and we can sort of take them as a given. You can have that discussion, okay, from their point of view, but yeah, our point of view, the next stage, so we may be able to. I expect we will, I don't think any, this piece of the committee work, right, in the short term, I would take it on the civil, it's always going to be very large, I think.
I can imagine exploring what's the city's policy on taxing, or other vehicles, other tools that economic development uses and maybe exploring what's the best practices that other cities are using, are the partnerships that can develop the major cities that might help further on, so I can see some of those things falling on that side of it. But that's a great example. And actually, on that point, I don't really have a good feel for exactly what, what is our current policy? Does it even need to be changed or tweaked? I'd be looking to, I have an administration on, yes. And as I thought it came to mind, I just heard the other day, Minneapolis, the same call has some kind of cooperative ring, that's a thing, where it's considered that you keep each other, the base bottom. I don't know if Oregon would be able to something like that, but see, that would be an example of a strategic legislative area that we might be able to have. Mr. Sir?
Bear in mind, the administration feel about this kind of committee with the potential that might be entracing on, or is the role of the administration, in terms of sensitive to that one?
Thank you for being sensible. Mr. Small and I have had numerous conversations of great length about this, and I think he's wisely picked up our sensitivities to this, it's met with economic development several times in his career with, on a data business. And I think our goal right now is to, to help define a mission statement that protects us on that. And the last suggestion from the community development, can we add to the mission statement? It's a committee, we won't do. To help with those fears, like it's just a natural tendency, as soon as you're talking to the arm about agreement, and the first, first thing you're talking to them all, right, about the primaries, and it's just so easy to cross that line. So I appreciate Mr. Small's very careful sensitivity to the fact that this could be a problem. Because he's met with economic development, he's sensed a pretty strong fear of this. And one of the reasons he's not ready to go forward is, is our respect for that fear. And I think taking more of a mission statement, we have our team comfortable with that and particularly, plus the training, I think we're going to get in place of, behalf of this focus. I'll add to this, what could you do with the state of the law for us? And particularly, given the fact that there's one personality in the council. I'm in a place where I don't think I've been before, recruiting businesses, not knowing if the council is supporting, so the council to speak and say, these are the types of things that are important in these circumstances, in case my team, what they need to refine those deals, and short of that, they're out guessing a little bit. And that would be really helpful for us to be the point. For instance, we kind of have a written policy that we don't offer in seconds to recap, and we suspect that may have changed. That is a suspicion, so we're out recruiting suspicion, that since the council, if the council could define what type of return, and much as simple, things like that, that would cheer my team.
I think one of the critical issues would be, we have incredible talent in this city in that area. This is school, the entrepreneurial part of it, it's rated number two in the country. So if you could have, like Walter's, but in economic development, like we've had on the finance committee, and then, might be some real cheap, you know, and I think you're where the, the team gets a little nervous. Is the team, at the moment, the council members calling up and saying, we want, this will be tell where our city can be, can you make a call to them? That's where they'd say, right, now you're competing with us, you don't know our work and so on, things like that. So I think it all depends on just mission statements, and people, be something that's clearly, everybody clearly understands of what's going to be supposed to do, and so it's easy to point out, so.
It's been helpful, that economic development report can be here from the group, that's a great opportunity. They, they would like to do even more, making you feel involved in performing. I think a lot of the trends, they're out there, and frequently, it's kind of on the fourth floor, definitely, because it's a, it's a company that doesn't want their competitors to model the work. And I think it's fair to say, they're exploring ways to, to create more informed, started their process, you know, just watching, in support of it.
I think that would be really helpful, because I know, even in the emails, sometimes they're very brief and cryptic.
Yeah, and the problems.
Because they have to be.
Yeah, but all of you should feel comfortable saying, I want to move a little bit more.
Yeah.
What's between the lines of this? I like the idea of setting some bounds, some things you should be doing. That, that would be very helpful. And it's work is comfortable for us too.
So could I just quickly summarize the last two pieces, and then I think maybe an interesting time, what I would suggest, unless you have questions or English, after the, they just individually provide any feedback you have of the city, not vague permission statements, here or there. So the second piece has to be like a developer's critical process, maybe through years and years, we've had complaints of developers. Situation is definitely improving, I hear that a lot, but there are still a lot of areas for improvement. So our goal there is not to get into the details, but to cooperate with the administration, creative development, those department, and engineering, and just try to come up with some compounds and standards that they can focus on. It's not something I'm looking at, so it's an expose, that would make sense, because they, they're the experts in this area, but what are, what are some of the best practices out there, what are other cities doing, what are the experiences that the developers have, that could be missed, or designed? There was just a lot of lessons to be, to be learned back there. And so far, I haven't really had a chance to talk with this very much with, with David, but it's, it's like, we have the community development, it's actually been very positive that we're, we're like, ready to help, and how, standard that they're shooting towards, that's my impression so far.
Well, I would say likewise, there's, I'm a public servant, like Mr. Small, favorite salesman, but the guy's great likes to meet with people and find the places where they're nervous, places where they're comfortable, maybe the last one, who's willing to share enthusiasm for the work that's out on this.
And the last point is just the updated revision toward the very committee. And the only point to that is, is let us go around, the council wasn't involved in that, we didn't have anyone from the council that was involved in the committee. So rather than having a separate committee go out and bring something to us, we just want to be involved and have a liaison to that committee. We're not actually saying anything here about, is only really, or how boards would be able to just participate in the process as it, as it evolves, but we just want the members that, that this committee would want it, to be liaisons as soon as we can and do that in coordination.
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, were there council members that were appointed to certain, there were, none of them chose to be involved in the prosperity, in the prosperity of the overall community, or were seeing that? It was available to them.
And I appreciate it. My, my biggest concern would be the makeup, the committee, the administration and council to be comfortable with those committees. And then the specific duties of that committee, I'd like to believe, and I love some of the things that have been discussed as far as, while looking at the processes, getting the right committee together to look at those, for example. We may have other things that may need to do with enforcement, zoning, whatever, but I'd like those things to be very specific and then choose your right appropriate people for those committees.
I agree with that, and that, that brings up another point. Actually, on this committee, since there's several different pieces to it, we actually envision that as many, I mean, that's, I was talking about one piece, that it'd be a sort of, or occasionally by, or to me, or to a particular topic, so. In that sense, it would be, it has a different, other committees we have, but we just have to see and set that. That's all.
So I, if I was on the committee, what I would like to see, this particular development, some case studies, development really went well. Developer was happy, great outcome, didn't have a lot of problems or hangups, it was timely. And then others, it had problems, and why was that? Was the process, not to assign blame, but just to say, how can we improve that process and make it better? The past weeks had some council lunches, and we had some developers come, and really fed about how we really had the issues in the past. And yet, the other day, when a particular developer heard that we were going to get serious about doing something, it was like, well, I'm really not saying anything, I mean, I work with staff, so don't ask me. I thought that was an interesting response, but hopefully, we can get some positive or just feedback that we can use to make it better.
I do like the ad hoc feature of this proposal. I think particularly with the ad hoc committees, that it may make sense, rather than having a multi-prone mission statement, that's, that's great, a committee with a very defined mission, and it might be short, but it may only be a few months, and then create another one, maybe afterwards, or maybe in parallel, but, but to keep, keep the missions very focused, and, and then dissolve them, that, if the mission is accomplished, we can be moved into the right stuff. So I, I, as I continue to think about this, I think that's the question.
So there would be one, there would be more retail issues, and another, there's looking just at the development process and how we can help with the development processes that we're, it's. And I think, I like the part where this is an incorporation with the administration, because some of those processes are going to be very much administrative, they're going to be sort of workflow processes that we don't really have any, you know, we don't have any effect on, but there will be other ways that, like with the general plan, that we're talking about, some other things that we can affect change, that we can help with the flow if we choose to. And so I, I do like this sort of coordinating between the two, so, you know, we can streamline the process in a way that we actually can affect.
Yeah, it's just to, if you, if you're trying to find the priorities, it's going to be important for us to know where these fall in those priorities, we can easily spend almost all your time. It's just one of these committees that can jerk. So I think that would be an important part of the future discussion, is to, where does this fit in the overall priorities?
So we don't need to vote on this, we're just going to bring it back to those committees where Mr. Small is writing?
There can either be a motion to continue it to a time definite, no one would like back then, or it can just be, no motion would just be left to Mr. Small to bring it to the leadership and ask them to be back.
I want to prefer to bring it back in two weeks.
So you have a motion for, for two weeks out, bringing in two motions. So. If we go back in two weeks, if we have a good one, is there a second? Mr. Stewart, some of the motion by Mr. Connect, and the second by Mr. Stewart, all, all the favorite? Thank you. Could I, would you have this?
Yes, can I make a comment? I cannot read names when he's talking that way, so I wonder, make a turn around, just a little bit.
Thank you. The next item is discussion assignment of council and mysterious committees, and we do have, you know, only agenda to go, we have a, maybe we'll bring it up on the main screen. There are a couple of ways we handled this in the past, right? So we've, sorry, I have to do, but you can make it up to me. We, it seems to me that we sort of looked at the list and then given ideas of how, what committees we would like to sort of go into the chair, and then come back at a later date. But it would be nice to get, it would be nice to get ideas of, of interest in the ways to.
You want us to give you ideas for a development?
What's that?
You want us to give you ideas, Seth?
We can have however you would like, we can have ideas now of where, where you might like to serve. I think either way, we need to bring it back to, we vote, on some cases, we vote...
Yeah, committee assignments by statute are determined by council.
Maybe we have it together, we could go on it today, but I'm assuming we could have the discussion and then, um, future.
Well, we have kind of a new requirement now to have a mission statement too, so maybe if we outlined what the committees are and got kind of a personal, just interested in why, we can go back and all the mission statements together.
Is that a statute or a requirement?
These are not, these are not all these committees, though, these are, some of these are like liaisons to the, they're, they're different.
And, and some of them, I'm sorry, some of them have different standards too, how they're appointed. So this, this table, they, I've highlighted the ones that probably need addressing first.
It is good, that's, sure.
You just scroll down until we...
So tonight, you'll of course determine leadership roles, if you move down, there are currently standing committees of the council, the policy governance committee, council rules committee, council budget committee. Library board is now vacant mayor, but that's an appointment by the mayor, and the council's advice and consent. There is an requirement though, that one of those board members be a councilman.
Yes, we would obviously look to the council to see if we were able to sort of...
The, these following boards are not formal assignments or appointments, these are, actually, these are not formal appointments, these are more assignments to be liaisons to these various various city boards and commissions.
With that being said, that doesn't mean that we just had to have one person on those assignments.
That's correct. And this is made one point distinction between the actual ordinance that talks about, brought up here. The municipal council may divide itself into committees, name and assigned subject matter of each committee, and the number of councilors assigned to each committee, and the selection committee shall be as the majority of municipal councils should represent. So organizing yourselves into committees is required to have majority of municipal councils. I think tradition in the past, though, these liaison roles and other assignments has been, council members express interest in that, and that assignment will be made by council chair. Of course, even if a formal assignment is made by the chair, that would unfortunately get a council on, they probably noticed.
Can I make a suggestion that, and I don't know if this goes to the chair or through you that, that third Tuesday is always a challenge with the airport.
Well, I'm, I'm going to make a note on these, I'm not sure if all these times are up to date or not.
I know that it has been a challenge to get to that, and I know I've always had to call what happened, I called the airport board chair, or I called Steve or somebody and say, fill me in because.
Don't rely on these things, they may have changes.
Yeah, that's always a council meeting, though, three, two, three of those, council meeting days.
So.
I, I have a question on the ice sheets, there are non-council members serving there, like, let's see, the council representative of that committee, anyway, the finance committee around, there's big, some big issues that we were, were in, or what was happening because we don't have the council that had it. Two years ago, Laura Kavanaugh was serving, council members chose to reappoint her, rather than put somebody on themselves, and so on, true. Should we have that option then to appoint someone?
It's absolutely, yeah. Technically, all that recommendation of, of the mayor, of the, that's, and then deploy the mayor, so for you and the vice consent, both may as well. Yeah, so in the past.
It's a pre-designated council seat.
I don't believe it's pre-
I don't think it's pre-designated, I guess the question, we'd actually have to look at the ice sheet bylaws, because what I'm not sure of is whether, well, it wouldn't make sense for it to be appointed by, by the board itself, because then you'd have to get Kennedy buy off of your own representative, so it probably is mayor, vice consent, would be my guess. That's how we handled it in the past.
And certainly, there are ways on there as well.
Yeah, absolutely. So there's not currently an opening?
No.
Right, all the terms, so.
How long are the terms?
So appointing a council member as a board member requires firing.
Well, gracefully, thank you members for listening.
We're waiting until some nice terms.
There's one other that I don't see here, and that's the municipal water board. Was that up to the top?
It's on the list someplace. Because I know, yeah, water board is, is unique, water board is positioned or appointed by the council.
Yes.
I put that in a different category of boards, these are joint entity boards. They're, they're, yeah, it's not even technically a joint entity, it is its own entity, but we created it, we have points of authority, so because of that oversight of this independent organization, I've labeled it a joint entity board. A council, that is the one unique board where council has a point of authority solely. Now, I don't know all the history behind that, I think it was created in 1930s, I believe, or something, or completely different set of rules back then, if longer government was not in existence at the time. It's a six-year term, and so you don't see these positions turn over very recently. We have recently, as of last year, Kay was appointed as a liaison, Gary out there attending. And we also verified that the water division director is a point of authority by default.
While we're here too, I just realized that there is a question on the pro housing project, we thought we had.
We had, we had that discussion in leadership, I didn't know that it actually...
I'll have to go back and see if drugs, if you thought we had, they didn't have it on their records, we have it on ours, but there is an empty seat there, like, we're assuming there should be a seat.
I was trying to find clarity about that, and I actually asked you to provide me the original incorporation bylaws, trying to find out exactly what the arrangements is. Pro City did create the house authority back in the early 70s. We have had a council member on that board until 2009, 2010, but after that, we haven't had one. So I have research exactly.
She would like, yeah, I'd be happy to, if you still, if you want to bring that to council, meeting first. We didn't bring it, and, yeah, and then if you just bring the information of when and where they meet and all the, that would be...
It's a very powerful board. You really need to be aware of what's at everything. As you talked about, figures, about housing types in the city.
Just going to have a follow-up on Matt's comment, I've been through that file, you don't want to go through it now. It's a mess. It actually came up just recently because they were subject to, the pro housing board had a citizen who was seeking some records from them, filed an appeal with the state archivist, and the state archivist contacted us and was, was confused about whether the board was part of the city or not. So I went through that file and did some research, and it's actually completely independent from the city, but it's created under a state statute, and the state statute requires that the bylaws provide that the city that originally creates the board have appointed authority for the board members. So even though they are independent from the city, state law requires them to have the mayor by advice and consent of the council, who needs the members on the board.
I did the research there, I can put that, we actually have some boards coming up.
Well, as I was looking into it, it looks like they were all the same term, and now they're trying to move to a standard.
What happened, it's like you changed their terms, which, just to look at, but when you evolve, it's very, very, so they came in that with me and asked if we could standard it, or if it was to address, it was making sense to have all expired the same time.
For how many years?
Therefore, I don't know what the status was. And just to ask, clarifying, was there a requirement that one of the board members be a council member?
No. Man, I'm going to ask if you can help us out with something here. I know that I very much appreciated the opportunity to be involved and talk with board members. I don't want to appear as a council member, that all of a sudden, three council members show up, that the directors feel, oh, what's going on here? And I want them, I hope that they'll feel that we're supporting them, and think, without exception, they would be tickled if all seven came in. Because they want you educated and engaged. I can't guarantee unless you came in with a specific mission to aid your scene, because I hope that they just welcome you, and please, that you were showing interest in the department. And I appreciate that, if you'll just tell them, tell them that, or if you're going to show up a number, you can warn me, and I'll warn them. Okay. Can't show up more than three, though, right? That doesn't seem it.
Well, there's a public perception problem there, for technical legal standpoint, if it's their meeting that they've called to discuss their business, and you are shown as observers of the meeting, then it's not technically a council meeting, and it wouldn't need to be noticed. That wouldn't necessarily, I've seen instances in the past where the press is still viewed it as a council meeting, and get upset with that, I'm pretty sure that would technically
Our board has great food.
So do we, at this point, do we want to look through the list and see the highlighted?
Just scroll down, make sure there's any other ones.
Oh, okay.
Dan from Pro Inc., there is actually a, by statute, liaison appointed by the chair is one of the exceptions. So as far as wants to be, the others don't have formal or traditional relationship with the council.
Does it need to be done today?
Not necessarily. You could just, those that haven't served, if they continue to go, with vacancies, I am, for talking about two weeks, probably not a lot of meetings will happen that kind of answer, I don't know.
Man, sure, I'd like to suggest, I think that, although it needs to be a motion, that we approach a new leadership individually, about where we'd like to serve, and then if you brought to the next meeting, or improved by, it's because you're in the council last year program, and also maybe people in your council, they could be approved, and you could just, you know, there's too many, and one might have to make decisions, or leadership by that, who's going to be presented? Do you need a motion?
I don't think it needs to be formal motion, I think if the chair is... No, it's just that, if some are still serving, and some apparently would probably continue, I mean, it says six years per king. Well, no, six years is the board member's... All of that's for the confusion there, six years is a board member term, how relate, the liaison holds them, I'm sorry.
Well, they have four, let's see. Plus bar, we have bar, bars, bars is what, it's moving.
And there's a, Merrill is in?
Merrill's a chair.
Oh, he's a chair.
He's also the director, he's the director, I guess they call it, I don't see that, I don't think he's on the board. Merrill is the director of the organization, and the chair is...
But he's a voting member, I think, is me.
Chair is probably Dan.
Yeah, that's right, it is.
Have I been surprised to have a voting member, or am I wrong?
Okay, well, that's as long as bar is.
So there's no positions that aren't holding over or an expectation of serving in that position, I mean, some of them want to, but in theory, they could just all be new.
If everybody's going to sign, that's a good way to proceed with your, you know, requests, and by next meeting, we can have that sort of laid out for everybody to, to discuss, and next meeting, to session this.
Can we get it written out, like this, or maybe it was already sent?
This is on, it's on public documents, we go to public documents, and we can make that available by email.
Yeah, we'll make all the documents available to the public documents site, we don't do paper, but if you do need a paper copy, just send me your, these request, put that in your files.
If you would admit that you had a log, we'd be there.
We need to submit that request by US.
We do want to receive it as early as possible.
It will only affect us from our own time.
Yeah, so as soon as possible, you know, so that if there are, if there's any, you know.
I would suggest that you actually give us, next meeting, a listing of who could be voted on.
Yeah, once, um, if you wanted them the next meeting, you'll need your suggestions and prior to next Wednesday, so you can discuss the leadership meetings. We will put together a draft proposal, update this.
Next week, the same meeting, not the next week, we can come up with a lead, come on. Semi-related note is, most of our boards and commissions expire, and the terms expire in June more, and we get hit with a host of positions to fill in a very short period of time, so we'll be starting in just a few weeks to gradually put together a list of people to fill those positions. And in addition, we have a vacancy, an energy vacancy, T-MAC, and we always welcome your suggestions, it helps us broaden base, that we're gathering these potential individuals from, or either it is, with an eye to our goal, or moment, in general, we're looking for good people that have sort of been involved in our city before, that would benefit by the service. Got some thought? Expertise, you know, well, depends on the board, right, and also depends on the makeup of the board. Sometimes it's good to have expertise on the board, and it may already be there at a medium level, and so we just want the more, to represent the more nurses. Sometimes we may be lacking some expertise on the board, and so, certainly never heard us to have expertise, but not a requirement at a medium level, of course. The technical expertise is usually there with staff.
Thank you. Excited to listen to an update on housing, policy, process, early meetings to council priority list, and this time, it will be presented by...
Just a brief update, in the sort of time I think anyway, so, wanted to let you know what we're doing. One, took some time between meetings, there's not one or two days of, they're less busy, and I did take, compile a, 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 demographic maps and data, census and other data source, data sets, I don't have those available, I'll actually, I'll find those available just so easy to prove, while making available officially two, just haven't had the time to get that compiled completely before we, we'll get that out soon. that out soon. A lot of the data, maps that we compiled, that working child were focused on Provo, but generally tried to get corresponded, Utop County looked at the same data, so they could have some comparison count. And one or two data sets, they'll take a few of cities I saw later. Pressure in relation to the accent of the housing projects and they're located, very useful data set. I was writing that down. Not tax, yeah, taxes. Last meeting, distributed paper copy of this, recognize it's a little dry, but, yeah, that's a, this one. I spent time studying the regional housing analysis for Utop County. I believe the city one was based upon this word, so this is more the foundational work on this, more specific to Provo. I will also be sharing a few realizations that they taught me. Some of the highlights, just sort of something specific to Provo and, and that's documents if you don't want to tackle this whole thing. Just get some highlights that you like, I think what you guys are used to, the topics that we mentioned, right? Third, we have, I sent you an email last night, we're, I said, on top of that, requesting your feedback on members to fill up, citizen, stakeholder, related to housing. We've got one recommendation, Charlie, well, not necessarily just citizens, but citizens, but other stakeholders, such as nonprofits and other entities. We've got one request from Charlie, wow, he made it worse, but I think, and again, this is something you all can, who can make up to that body, but I, I would suggest that it has a wide variety of people from nonprofits, maybe some in the public sector, and also some citizens too. I recommend not making more than seven, nine people. Nine is probably okay, if you recommend some people, I'll drop out later on. Because typically, housing is a fail. Unless you just get really lucky. If there is a lot more recommendations, which I expect to be, and staff would probably field a few thoughts too, whether they're selected or not, but from their committee, we might not conduct a series of qualitative survey or questions from those that can't be made. So feel free to suggest as many people as you want, but probably a prior work by some secret. Um, we also acquired some resources, several books and other things, again, some of the pretty dry, heavy, I'm not even sure if I can get to them, but, but they're available.
Electrolytes?
Um, no, these are actually print, and I have those copyrighted, yeah, it's strictly going to electrolyte, but we can check them out too, like, it's a speed tracker group as well. One is, I have to look to here. One is called Decent Home Strategies for Affordable Housing. We acquired Mr. Chaiten's book, talking about the books, that was interviewed, so we're working through that right now, if you want to see what. We also given to us the, the professor, the professor else's book on foundation of real estate development, principles, some sections on there about private, private public partnership to, to that, to this question. Regional approaches to affordable housing, it's a textbook, size, some on server, also available, affordable housing design, American asset, talks about best practices and giving the cap for the design approach. It's just a small book, mostly pictures, but some stuff. And then two, planning advisory service briefings, which come from American Financing Association, one on inclusionary zone, another on housing age population. So just want to let you know those resources are available, if you want to just combine proof through them or take one off or, we could, um, speed track them. Anyway, it's just a brief update, continuing to make progress and look at you in that data, we can collect them. I like that stuff, it's, maybe you, or there, I like it too, I just find it kind of, remember when I was on the council floor, they sent me, I don't know who else, but maybe you remember, I was with the American Financing Association Congress. That was good stuff.
Any other questions or comments? Excited is the evaluation of the general plan amendment process and possible referral to planning commission for recommendations, so this item will be presented by Mr. Stone.
Thank you. So we're, we're asking whether we should ask the planning commission for recommendations to review our general plan amendment process, and there's three particular areas of it that we're about, and we just wanted to review those for you. One is that as a developer, you meet the general plan, there are two opportunities for you, or maybe the best one, in March, even if it's a two months. You may just file their application with community developer about three months, the variance of those two times. So from the time the developer gets the idea, has a project, realizes, oh, I can give it to a general plan, then let me pass for this, there's a delay before you can actually bring that through the process by one, two, nine months, having a combination of those two pieces. Does that make sense? Any questions about that? So, um, those two delays is one of my concerns with, what is the advantage to that? I originally assumed there, well, there's an obvious disadvantage to the developer jabbing away through this, and I assume that there would be some offset advantage that we're having here. And as years I can tell, looking back, I think it had something to do with, it was a wide, other pledge to general plan update, and it was a period of time that was feeling like it was a whole bunch of general plan amendment requests right after we got all this work to, you know, with the general plan. And I'm just not sure that that logically ties. My observation is, as I look at different pieces of properties that I turn them in there, that had a general plan amendment request, it's typically been, I think, several years before there had previously been a general plan request. Actually, Bill, I'd be interested in your opinion on that. Does that sound accurate to you? Can you just pick a random piece of property that we're having a general plan amendment request on? Has it typically, has it typically been one within previous year, or has it been longer?
I guess if you look at chase file and the files, yeah, with your general plan amendments, it would probably get six to 10 a year, somewhere there. I didn't look at that, I don't know if I can get, but probably somewhere there.
Okay, that's helpful. So the question I was asking myself is, so it's been a while since we've been requested a question, and, and the developer's ready to go, why are we asking for this extra delay? What purpose does that serve? So I asked community developer, asked, you know, if you could jump in for that, go back. So why don't you jump in? What was your opinion?
Well, I can't, kind of that same sentiment of, was there really a benefit to that that outweighed the time delay that that causes? I think we had talked about, at some point, there was a neighborhood, or maybe a couple neighborhoods, that felt like they were getting these requests and rapidly succession, and felt like they were having to, kind of short on time, recent, several of these requests that helped motivate the restriction two times a year. But as we've discussed in recent years, we have never had that kind of clustering in any one area of the city, where a neighborhood felt like they were on defense of a general plan amendments. As we talked about as staff, we didn't feel like there was enough benefit, enough money to need to keep it, or we would be wanting to get a current amendment that would negate that part.
Thank you. Let me, let me point out one other concern I have about the process, besides those two There is also a waiver inflicted to the process where it could be their city staff, or any elected official mayor, or city council, or the council, the community director, director, to ask for a waiver, they're in a way to bypass those restrictions. They're ready to stay with that currently.
Thing is, we remember the city council, and the city council can direct us to move some of the board, that's scheduled. And there have been times in the past when one came forward that made sense to us, that resigned that it was gonna go longer, that made sense to us, we were supportive of it. So we encouraged, yeah, we didn't, talk to council members, see if they would respond to bring it along. I think that happened on the Marvell catering one, which is the largest one we've heard, that single lot on the west side of Marvell catering mall is, that's a good example.
Okay, so there is this waiver process, and Brian, can you clarify, from my recollection, I think you did mention the mayor, I think you mentioned city staff as well.
Community developer director.
I think that's.
And mayor.
Can, can bring a request for a waiver to the community development director? I believe that's from, I'm trying to bring it up here. So while he's pulling that up, so my main concern with that is sort of a fairness issue. If, you know, if one project gets a waiver, and then another developer comes along, and doesn't, and says, well, my project had the same benefits as that one did. Brian, would you, I'd like to close on that. I think it'd be nervous, I'd like to hear you.
Sorry, I was reading the statute, because we were just talking about, I didn't hear your question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead and answer that previous question.
Well, so, Matt, first, if there's exceptions to general plan amendment, it may be granted by the community director, with the amendments initiated by the city, and specifically says the city means the mayor, municipal council member, or city staff.
That's a pretty broad set of people that can request a waiver. So my question, my second question to you, Ben, was on the potential for legal exposure with this waiver process, do you?
For legal exposure to the city by uneven.
By the way we use the waiver process.
Yeah, I mean, the general standard for any kind of claim like that would be, the word that the courts use and the case law uses is arbitrary, capricious, and illegal. And so what could happen is if you're relying, you could have a waiver that's granted, and then you could have somebody come in, else come in and ask for a waiver and be denied. And it's, the standard of legislation is really hard to satisfy, but really easy to file. And so, you know, you could have somebody coming in, file a claim that their decision not to grant them a waiver was arbitrary, capricious, and illegal, because their situation's very similar to the waiver that was just granted, and you should have granted one, and you should have granted both, or neither. Those kind of cases are very, very successful for the party making them, because arbitrary and capricious is deemed by the courts is essentially meaning you have no articulable basis for why you lose the decision. But that doesn't mean that it can't tie up some resources while we're, we've had a few of those last two or three years while we're, while we're clocking the process.
Thank you. So we have a range of options, I'd like to propose that we have the planning commission way of study this and weigh in on this, and then our options would be any, anything to relieve as is, to reducing the delays, to eliminating them completely. This is all.
If you want to pick first. So currently, it's like three months ahead of time, that's your, finally that, why three months? Does it really take three months to prep that? Bill?
When the big update, Task Force Two Thousand, and the general plan went through a major overhaul, they put in no updates for a while, because they wanted to give it a chance to go through. Then they decided to allow updates and put in those other provisions, and it really wasn't for staff. It doesn't take staff three months advance, it really was a neighborhood issue. There were a lot of repeated general plan amendments over and over in neighborhoods, and people from neighborhoods were feeling like, holy cow, I missed one meeting, and the general plan gets changed, and it changes everything, I have to be there and, and to hold the line every time. So it's really kind of a, a neighborhood issue, not a staffing issue. The other thing, which kind of, another step back, a larger context, is the general plan, how do we want to treat it? Some communities treat it as mandatory, and you have to follow it, and you cannot rezon contrary to the general plan. State law allows you to do that, but you have to specifically set forth that your general plan's mandatory. So Provo City doesn't have that, we've never done that. So like the Marvell general plan amendment, they didn't need to do a general plan amendment to get the rezon. And the city council in the past has occasionally rezoned pieces of property that are contrary to what's set forth in the general plan. And so you can remember some of those instances that that's happened. And so that's another thing, is how do we want to treat the general plan? Is the general plan a document that we want to follow? My recommendation's always been, don't make it mandatory. There will be instances that'll come up that you want to leave yourself, for good reason, to come forward and rezon a piece of property. So Marvell legally did not need a general plan amendment, but we've done that occasionally we go through, and then when we do, make some changes that are a little bit contrary, you know, a property here or there on some of the boundaries, and then when we do our update, we fix those as, as we go on. So there's kind of that larger picture also of, how do you want to treat the general plan? And what does the general plan really mean?
Okay, here to go with the building. I probably go back to, is there a problem? With the way we're dealing with general plan, right after about general plan now, is there a problem? Are we, maybe we as a council don't understand how we're treating the general plan, first of all, so maybe we need to look at, what is our attitude towards general plan? And Gary says he's always recommended that it's not mandatory. I don't know if we're along with that. And it sounds like we have exceptions, but a wide group of people that can get exceptions to the general plan. And so the fear of treating people different, I don't, is there a better case for that? Accusants of doing that, Brian? Again, I'm looking, is it better problem, so we need to fix it? Are we fixing something that's working?
I'm not aware of one, since I've been here, you know, we've had some in the past where, where it usually arises is, when someone makes that claim about our failure to prove a rezon, right, we, they apply for a rezon, and we turn it down, and, and try to make a claim that there was no reason why we should have turned down the rezon. But even that, I've heard of some in the past, they were the one, one of my times. We can't.
We have a request to leadership, to identify some other cities and other practices where breaks, hopefully do that this morning, yesterday afternoon. If you might hear that now, or just to show you that.
And I guess ask the question of, is this, is all good, but is there a problem that we're trying to fix? Or are we just, I don't know, what are objectives?
They have their own problems, a lot of the ways, and doing the process.
Well, I think for any developer, unnecessary three to nine delay is a problem, it's a financial issue. They may have to buy an option of the property, or just may need to lay the creation of their project. So for a, for a project that we're ultimately going to improve, and say what you want, and all you've done is just slow down that project by X number of months. And even if it's. And even in the case of a project that we end up not approving, I kind of see it as a problem there too, because you've got a developer that wants to get an answer from us. Are we going to approve this general plan amendment? He has to wait three to nine months, and possibly, but it's already in time to find out whether he's going to go ahead. And in the meantime, there may be some other good project possibilities that weren't allowed to progress because we were just having some...
What I would propose is that we change it so the longest, that everything would wait just three months. That no one would ever just start waiting four, five, six, seven, eight, nine to complete that project. So if we did it maybe quarterly, at least twice a year, so even if you missed the deadline, it's not as long.
That certainly was an option. So I guess in the same, financial damage might occur a six-month wait, isn't going to occur a three-month wait. It's not going to occur quite so hard. And I don't know that that validates the... Either makes financial damage or doesn't. Well, we're going to damage it three months instead of six months.
Well, actually, if you did it quarterly, and so in the worst case, it's nine months, full nine months. If you actually did it quarterly, and you didn't necessarily have a three-month, maybe it was just a two-month. We do want to be sensitive to neighborhoods, as we, Gary, eventually, that they don't want it done like that. So if you do want to delay it a little bit, just make sure that the delay is not even lower than it has to be. And I'm saying that right now, to have a variable delay anywhere, gee, I'm lucky I got three months delay. Oh, yeah, rolled dice, and I got a nine months delay. That doesn't seem, that seems kind of arbitrary, capricious.
So, Mr. Ben, I'm sorry, Mr. Ben, just asking you, is there a problem? That's a very good question to ask. Listening to David Gardner at Parsons Summit, he feels that there is a problem. My concern with this is hardly addressing the problem. I think that his concern is how we're treating the general plan or the general plan map. And that we're almost treating it as a secondary zone. I might almost feel that we continue to do that just with our discussion here. We're not talking about necessarily holding up developments for three to nine months. I mean, if this development was submitted at any time. What we're talking about, the way I see it is, what we're talking about is giving time to changing our vision, changing our city policy. What are we willing to allow in certain areas? What are we communicating that this is the appropriate use? When is there any redevelopment that's appropriate use for that? And I see these kind of foundational visionary documents as things that we want to be careful about modifying. A lot of thought goes into it at the time. And we give these opportunities for them to be updated, but want to make sure that they're updated with proper thought. And we need to understand, hopefully, we understand why it was put there in the first place. If this situation changes, then yeah, let's go ahead and change it. I look at the Constitution of the United States. There isn't a time required for amendments, but we think of ourselves as a democracy, but a majority is not sufficient to change our constitution, protect the super security, and as well as other hurdles. And so I don't see these hurdles as punishment for developers. But these are high hurdles to say, are we going to change our vision? And if we're going to change our vision, let's make sure that we do it with care. So I guess the problem that I see is that we're now treating our general map, their general plan map, as a secondary zoning. And so every time a development goes in, well, you have to change the, not only do you have to change the zoning, but you also have to change the general map, general plan map. And that's, to me, that's the problem. So my recommendation on this, or my thoughts on this, is we're discussing creating an ad hoc committee to look at the development of the process. Let's add this to the items that we want reviewed. And then let's get a whole list of those rather than what possibly may be on the public project.
Would you like to overview or... I think just give a brief summary, if that's okay? Only one. We actually were able to contact five cities. The other two, we just looked at the code and read through that. But the first five cities listed below Provo, only one of them has time restrictions in that slogan. And they don't actually have specific dates that they hear on. They just hear three times a year. And when the third one's up, then they're done. The third public hearings is done, and they're done. Two of the cities previously had time restrictions, and they eliminated them between five and 10 years ago. Those cities are Orem and Lehigh. And finally, the last thing I wanted to mention is that two of the cities we talked to specifically mentioned, they have a development review committee that goes through each general plan amendment. And that's a preliminary step before we can go to the planning commission and the council.
I make an observation based off my planning background. I think if you talk to planners of each of the cities, they might be surprised at how we look at the general plan. Or they might think similarly. My point is, every city thinks about their general plan in terms. Now, I think the majority of cities probably look at it through a paradigm of Provo guts. Not to say there isn't. Some of them do look at it like we do. But when we make calls about the general plan, sometimes they're scratching their head, what are you talking about? So just keep in mind that, just because another city has a role, they're looking at their general plan very differently.
And that probably goes back to economics. Do we need to change its time period to three months, or maybe it's a little bit bigger? Or whatever. I don't know, it's interesting. I don't think it's a good sense. Just Mr. Gardner, you're talking about the political wisdom for a city without that. So I mean, if we take it one step back and say, we're trying to improve the development process, we're not choosing a developer's way, obviously, we have to choose a...
I just wanted to make one comment too. Some of my constituents are, they look at the general plan as a safety net. They, as an opportunity for noticing, because they may not see the little notice in the newspaper. They may not see the sign on the side of the road, or get out to read it. And those are comments that I'm getting, that they like having notice, adequate notice, of being able to be aware of what's going on. And I think if they did start to stack up one after the other, I can see all that to be difficult, as Mr. Biggins has mentioned. But maybe that's, maybe that's something that we can handle differently too, with the way we notice the neighborhoods. And I don't know if that becomes a problem, if they're, if they're stacked one right after the other. And then to be sure of what our long-term goal is, and this was another comment made to me, is are we looking at the finance of the developer, or are we looking at the predictability of where we live? And having adequate notice of if something's going to change in our vicinity. And so that was another thought. Citizens, what is our end goal, and what are we trying to help or deter, or what is our end goal?
Just to summarize, I think this is a very important discussion. Citizens do take the general plan seriously and put one adequate notice. So if we had no waiting period required at all, that really has to do with citizens and taking the notice. So in that regard, if the three months waiting period, or the deadline, it seemed to serve a purpose. I was just pointing out that it just wouldn't seem to be consistent. Some people wait three, four, five, six, you know, it's variable. If it was always three months, then obviously, technical and development doesn't feel right. It's just variable and arbitrary.
Just follow, if you did it, a three-month waiting period, then you'd be having them all the time. It's not like, every third month, we're going to have one.
They said in one city, they do it three times a year.
Okay, then some person finally had one. So you're arguing that we need at least three months for the notification. But if you're in that last month prior to the next meeting, you only need one month of notification. Well, when you find a problem, I'm not sure that solves that.
I guess you're right, but if you did it, if you missed the deadline, and it was done quarterly rather than twice a year, then you would still be longer than three months. It wouldn't be nine months, but it would be less.
So thank you. I'd be happy with two routes that we could go here. One would be Mr. Artis suggesting to the committee, but I do raise the question of, even if you do that, does it make sense to get the planning commission involved? It seems like it would be all over the area to give us a recommendation. With that, Stan, in there. Actually, one of the thoughts that has come up in this discussion, we haven't talked about it yet, but it's, in my opinion, how dysfunctional the system is, or exceptions. There's nothing else I'd like to see take that away. It doesn't make any sense at all to do this sort of system. The last thing I want, somebody logging in to this system. David and I have had a number of conversations about this, and there have been a lot of additional thoughts today. We share diverse feelings on this. I would say, and we can speak out of it with different, the administration's going to have a very easy time supporting it. We're all in the council and hands on this. Easy support, moving that order very heavily stated, as a general rule, plus regulations. All this support, we're going to go.
Okay, final thought. No deadlines. You can hear it anytime you do hear, but there is a three-month wait.
That's a definite option. I don't think our goal is to try and nail that down today, but to see how you felt about, should we get the planning commission involved, sort of for the nation to study this? That would be my suggestion.
I think they could be, excuse me, part of a committee. I think we also need to be involved, public works in that group, because they are part of the process in this time period and same with community development. If you're talking about a specific committee, I think the makeup of that again becomes very critical.
I just verify the statute for it, if I'm correct, that at some point, the planning commission will require a recommendation. So whether you form an ad hoc committee to ask the considers specific proposal, or you ask the planning commission themselves to develop specific proposals or to...
Seems like processes are already in place for the planning commission, where they would involve, you know, developers. They would give it a lot of, assuming, engineering, all those, as far as giving their presentation to the planning commission, is that correct? So the groundwork would be done through city staff, brought the planning commission, they'd give a recommendation. And then we would think, those are necessary for this line, right?
I could almost guarantee you, staff, it won't be important to staff, whether it's community development, or engineering, or anybody else. Whether we wait, do it twice a year, whether we do a general plan amendment anytime. Those are the big issues. The big issue is, what does the general plan mean? And can we rely on the general plan to do planning for future things? And an example of that is, frankly, I think the city in its past, we've used the general plan not as a planning document, but a control document. So we'll have areas on the west side that if you asked, you know, 90% of the people in a room and said, what do you think will happen in these areas? And they'll say, well, it will be mostly residential. But our general plan has kept it agricultural. Then when UDOT does planning for traffic, like on Geneva Road and things like that, they come to us and say, well, your general plan says this whole area for the next 20, 30 years is going to be agricultural. And we say, no, 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 we know that our general plan says that, but we all know it will develop. And so really, how do we use the general plan? Is it going to be a planning document to be an indication in the future of really what we want to have happen? Or is it more like it is now, kind of a control document? And so I think that's the bigger issue for us. I remember years ago, when we were working on a, starting to work on sewer master plans and water master plans on the west side. We had a meeting, the consultant came in and said, oh, well, you know, based on your plan, you only need that. We all had to say, no, 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 hold it, hold it, no, no. Sorry, you can't trust this general plan because it's going to develop, and we're going to have higher population. You just know, you need to put those types of projections into your water planning, into your sewer planning, into road planning, things like that. And I think for staff, that's really the bigger issue, is what does the general plan really mean? Not whether we do it twice a year, or we just do it at the time of the rezon application. That's not what impacts staff.
So I propose we break this into two pieces. The easy piece would be to address the waiver problem and get some kind of recommendation. In that extent, it should be quick, and then that's the next piece. To look at the process of what the general plan means.
I didn't go the other direction on it, but I think it's worked well enough to this point that I think we want the planning commission's input on any sort of improvements of the overall development of the process. I imagine people want their input, where people are at, as well as all of these others. And so to me, again, it makes sense to just take a step back and look at it holistically. Unless there's a very pressing need to close that, waivers, exceptions. I think, my, what I've seen, I agree with staff, and with Gary, that what the problem is, and if you know how to fix it, I think you just need to do a couple of steps. So that would be my preference on which way we're supposed to go. So just to comment, too, we, Gary, you were referring to a control document. And yes, that has, is how it's been used. And if you look 50 years in the future, say, well, it's all going to be residential to... Or mixed use, just throughout, whatever designations. And then just change your general plan to see that 50-year vision. And then allow people to come in and build whatever, wherever. Then you end up with leapfrogging development. There's no timing and sequencing. You just don't have any control. Maybe you do want some control about which areas develop first, and what sequence.
And there are property rights, and there are people, you know, they own this property. We can go in, and we can, we can make a plan for their agricultural area. And then, you know, what kind of concern, consternation will come with that. And then that could change two years later with the next council, and two years after that with the next council. And so I, I'm kind of grappling with how, how do you plan, how do you do that when some of this is private property? You know, there's going to be a road that goes through part of your farm, whether it would be, I mean, we've experienced that already, right? But I know there needs to be some planning, but I'm just saying, at the same time, how does that stay consistent, and how, when you're talking about people's private property... how does that stay consistent and how, when you're talking about people's private property, how do you just go ahead and make a plan, right? So in some ways, I do think that it is, there are some safeties with the general plan. And yes, you do need to have a plan going forward with some rights. I'm still trying to figure that out in my head, how that works.
I see that as kind of the, the problem with you, if we don't separate these documents, we use the general plan as expressing the vision and then we use zoning as that control. So because we say, "Well, let's put the vision into the general plan now." If it shows residential, even though it's currently agriculture, that does not mean that we're so, that does not mean that we go in and we step in zoning to all residential and it can be fraud. Let's put the vision in and then let's hold off on the rezon until the proposals come that are suspicion quality to justify the reason. Just a short example, the Radio Station property, which we're all familiar with. That's been kicked around 20 years, finally got people to be developed. Anderson Development came to Provo when I was on the council and they had a reputation for suing whichever community they want to get their waiver. And they threatened to have it done. It was a four-three vote, not to give them the zone. And they sued based on the fact that we already general planned it for that purpose and we didn't have a reasonable reason to deny them. Whereas if the general plan said it was still agricultural, then we would have to make an exception. Yes, we could have given them, but the general plan is the gatekeeper.
Ken, I'm not feeling the answer of consensus coming in here. In the interest, we had the answer, we could market it and saw all of it. In the interest of time, I'll draw the proposal and check in. We should keep our information, in case you bring it back. We should keep our information, in case you...
Yes, my information, I'll check it.
We'll grab that.
So the next item is an overview of the proposed Provo downtown street scape standards. And this will be introduced by our...
So what you have in front of you now, if you can actually just bring up the PDF. A little bit less than a year ago, April of last year, the downtown master plan was adopted as an appendage to the general plan. One of the specific goals identified in there was a need to establish a street scape standard to help the pedestrian environment. A big purpose to this, from an urban design standpoint, is to help make sure that a place has unity and harmony with it. Not necessarily to regulate every little detail and minutia, but to help establish a place. And so following those guidelines, those goals that have been set forth in that plan, we see community development department has worked with many of the other departments as well and outside consultants to develop a street scape standard. So the idea of this is for the downtown areas to help identify what that place is. Previously, maybe a couple of years ago, if the developer were to come in and say, "Okay, this is the project that I want to build." They go through that development review process. You may or may not get the same answer about some things from all the different departments. Things like a pavement color or a pattern that you're supposed to play the paper in when it comes to the street scape itself. So the idea of this document was to help gather that consensus from all the different departments, make sure that we were all, we are all on the same page. And then obviously to have this adopted as a formal standard. So when a developer comes in, we can hand this document to them and say, "This is what we expect from you and it's clear and direct, we're looking." So I don't necessarily have any intentions to go page by page through this. I assume that most of you have probably gone through this, it's by OnSire and things. So, but I'd be happy to address any questions or concerns I might have with this.
A few years ago, we had a committee that got together and we talked about what we're gonna do with our downtown. What was it, $80 a block or a half a block? That kind of went away a little bit because we didn't know how we were gonna find those things. But that was a, we had a group get together and look at Center Street specifically. So part of Center Street has a large crown in the middle. There's some problems with it. And one of the big problems with Center Street that we're working on now as staff, that we're gonna make a proposal here in the near future to the mayor, is how to deal with the trees. The trees on Center Street are beautiful. It's the number one thing people love about Center Street and it's the number one thing people hate about Center Streets. Ironically, as we've worked with people are the trees. And some of them aren't that healthy. How do we do? So those were all the issues that we came up with. And what we did was, what if we were able to go in and just do redo Center Street? And it was a million dollars a block base, just completely lower the crown, do all the... Yeah, because that's underground infrastructure, how do we deal with all these things? And it just came out that that was just unworkable to do. And so we know the downtown's larger than just Center Street. So that effort spurred this. And now you have this step of it. We'll have another step dealing with trees and other things on Center Street. That hopefully will take a more incremental approach that's a reasonable and logical way of doing it. And so that's the committee you're talking about, I don't remember when you're taking. And that effort spurred what you see now.
Mr. McGinn, didn't we start that discussion because of the new scheme? Well, and we wanted, okay, if we're gonna redo side of the hospital, redo the bay, you know where to put things and how to park them. And so let's get a coordinator down.
It was not in the convention center together.
That's right. And so we have to afford to do what we have to do, but there's a potential somebody else is gonna come along now and say, "Hey, I wanna take these two blocks." And so we do need to address it somehow so we can carry this consistency or, you know, there's a need there.
And some issues like the trees in the middle of Center Street, a development like a new skin or a convention center or the temple won't really address. But in the public right of way that's public property, as they have to rebuild as a part of their budget, to what standard do we want them to rebuild? And so that's what we're getting our arms around. And we'll see more development in the future of Provo. We want to have a consistent standard that's predictable for staff and how it functions and operates, predictable for developers. So just talking, is it helpful to get all the city departments on the same page? As it is, telegraph or enhance the development community. Instead of you build, help with parting project across the street. You know, this is my expectation.
T-MAC, we saw this in the T-MAC meeting. But maybe it seemed like that there was a favorable...
Very favorable.
Response from the community members.
Very favorable. We did a couple of different points, like what about this, what about that? But in general, my impression was that T-MAC was very favorable to these standards. Would love to see this brought about. We talked about how, you know, if you set a standard now and maybe 10, 15 years before you really see it fully implemented because it is dependent on with these properties we develop. But it's, you know, I mean, I think we would have had to make a place 20 years ago, but probably best time to start is now. It's, you don't do it 20 years ago. But yeah, generally very supportive.
That's what I remember too. And you bring up a big point, you say 10, 15 years down the road. There was, there's one part where it talks about any further interpretation on the first page. It talks that any further interpretation of these standards shall be given by the community development director of Public City and shall be considered the official interpretation. And 10, 15 years down the road, it's carrying again this notion and then somebody else. And in that, how does that stay consistent with the interpretation if it's one person interpreting what this means? Am I reading that wrong?
No, what we're hoping with this is this isn't a public right of way. And so it's public property which we're talking about. And so in the city, one of the biggest hurdles we have as an administration is, is frankly getting all of the different departments on board too and understanding so that one department doesn't just do one thing that makes sense to them and they start moving forward in a direction. Another department does one thing that makes sense to them. And so this effort you see here was very collaborative internally first, with all departments participating, a lot of give and take, back and forth of what we could do. Then what the intent of that really is, is for community development to be the guardian of this standard. And if we're going to change it, that's what community development, I think, does best is try to build consensus, whether it's in the community and often internal with different staff departments, try and build the standard of what we're going to do. And we'll keep this document. And if we're gonna make changes to it, I would anticipate we go through a similar process internally to make sure everybody's on the same page. Any changes that are made, all the departments are on board, everybody knows. Planning commission knows, T-MAC knows, council knows. And we go through a very similar process. These hopefully won't change very often. Because when you're building your public right of way and the infrastructure that goes with it, it's something that you don't like. It's something that you have a standard and you keep with it for a long period of time, especially as most of it will get done as properties redevelop. Now, if we want to pay 1.5 million per block face and do it all at one time, you know, that's a different approach that we'd love to talk to you about.
I didn't answer pretty close.
I was hoping there was a different answer.
You just jack that the price by 15%.
Well, yeah, because when we did it, how many years ago was it? So there's probably been at least a 10% increase from when we did our pricing.
It could have been 1.5 there, I just remembered, wow, it doesn't matter. What did, what will this do to, to look at the zone here with the BRT route? Is this something that it's gonna change and they will become subject to these restrictions? And is that playing to what we've already got designed with GTA?
So we've already, we're already aware of the R T route and that that's going through there. So we took that into consideration as we went through this. We talked with the design team that's working on that and made them aware of these as well. And they were actually very appreciative that we had something like this to show them and say, "This is the direction we want to move. Does this work?" They said, "Great," and they'll do it. I mean, there's a few things that we actually make unique to University Avenue. They weren't because of the BRT, but it was more because we're trying to make sure that certain elements in certain spaces have appropriate attention. But yeah, this falls in line with what's being designed there and spatially it all works.
And Jerry, we're looking for a motion now to move this to council, maybe move something?
Yeah, no.
For council policy, these preview items come to the work session first preview are on that discussion here in council. And of course, that's always under the presumption that if you're uncomfortable with the item, continue or table it.
So essentially, if we pass this in University Avenue, the bulk of this would be taken care of with BRT then? With BRT, because most of it's...
There is a pretty good chance that that's covered in that.
This addresses First North, First South, Freedom, the streets.
Yeah, actually, if you go to, if you want to scroll through just to the page two of the PDF. So as you can see here, we, you've got your main boundary area that's highlighted there with the red border. Everything within that is absolutely, it will follow the standard. Any of these areas that bleed out of that in the DT zones and the TOD zones, specifically even states in here that those are considered transition blocks. And it's up to staff to determine where that transition best suits it because they're all so unique to go through and call out, no, this is gonna run to this specific interchange, this drive approach just not necessary. So those transition areas are basically handled on a case-by-case basis as things develop. But the idea is to transition from this standard to our typical standard of a seven-foot park strip, six-foot walk that you see in all other developments in the city, so.
Is it fair to say that these, this document doesn't dictate what the nature or the role of First North is, but it states what the street layout should look like on First North?
Yeah, exactly. This is, this is not a street standard, it's a street scape standard. So there are some spatial characteristics involved with it, but it's primarily back of curved building face that we're addressing. So the actual roadway and things like that is a, that's a public works direction. And that's based on classification of roads.
Yeah, so is there any public art you're planning on incorporating or having them incorporate that?
Well, so again, to be, to make it a little bit clearer, the intent of this document is to establish a baseline minimum, that the city won't accept anything below that. But also, we want to help encourage and incentivize things that we do want to see without being so prescriptive that we end up dictating every little thing that happens. Something like public art, think about how unique public art can be. From one block to the next, you could get something vastly different. And so we don't want to be so prescriptive that we're telling them what kind of public art. But we did want to make sure that there's a statement there to say, "If you want to do this kind of thing, we welcome it here in Provo and there are spaces where that can exist and we will work with you to develop those."
Even stupid bear.
If we could get a 60-foot bear to be in some way. What's interesting when it comes to public art, as a side note, is what kind of a space that starts to create, you can attract a lot of economic development activity based on people wanting to come and take a picture with something and then browsing around the rest of the downtown environment. So from an urban design standpoint, art is very important for the outdoor environment.
So my favorite experience is the Seattle's just happening upon this giant orange circle. They're all down here. Wow, orange, took several photos.
As long as they're connected, come on, let's, yeah.
So are there any other questions?
That's gross. That's just gross.
Just quickly, if I could, if you look at that first page, that's Austin's artwork and decides to find expertise, brings creative touch. And my agreeing, big thanks to everybody that's been involved in this. People talk about accounting doubling the size of the numbers. Totally going to do that and be what we love about public art. Things like this are a little important piece of maintaining the quality of the bond of this, this area. So thanks to everybody who was involved in this.
So thank you. The next item is that, an overview of a proposed amendment to section 14.34.230, residential facilities prescribed the disability and residential facility for elderly persons, including the elimination of minimal separation requirements and adding certain site standards and occupancy requirements. And legal.
I'm Danielle Ward, this is the attorney of the office. This issue came before a work session last February. I'm Danielle Ward, this issue came before a work session last February, and then was referred to the planning commission, the planning commission report of action. Come back to the council now, we can make a decision about how you like to do. The proposal is that the locational restrictions, which essentially would restrict persons with disabilities from living in certain places, be removed from the code, which would be consistent with the TOSA code and with federal law. So you may have questions, but I could answer for you, if you have materials in your capital.
Will this require existing buildings to make changes to allow for those things to have a neighborhood of disabled access?
This really doesn't handle physical facilities. Those are handled very capably under, for the city, by Dick Blackham and others, and it seems to be right on top of that. But for private, only in...
This is not...
Only insofar as the building code would require that. And Jerry could probably correct me, but I think that you would probably need a four-unit dwelling in order to get certain kinds of physical ADA accommodations.
Under the building code, there are requirements for ADA that they have to put in, and that's my memory, is if you have four units, then you have to put in ADA accessible bathrooms and all of those types of things. If it's just a single-family home or complex, there's not a requirement to have a certain number of units set aside for ADA access.
Someone putting a facility in specifically for a disabled person, obviously may have different requirements and regulations.
So do those requirements become an adjective on the buildings, or do they need a license?
Well, if somebody's putting in a facility specifically for this, to get a license from the state, they would have to meet the building code issues that are designed for handicap accessibility. If you're remodeling a historic building, not for that, there are some code requirements to do ADA, but it allows the owner to work with the city to keep a historic building and kind of balance those two interests. But if you are remodeling a public building or something like that, then you have to meet the ADA codes that are in the building codes. That's why you don't see torn ops anywhere, they're all anymore, they're all the ADA accessible handle now, for those reasons, unless you happen to go to a historic building. But I think in this situation...
Nothing related to the physical facility, other than location, in effect, is likely to change.
And we'll handle all those issues as we normally do under certain laws.
So how do we define disability? If someone is on an alcohol or recovery or drug addict, how broad is the definition? It seemed like it was pretty broad.
For federal, we use the federal definition, which is, in the city, a person with a disability could be a person who has an addiction.
What kind of addiction is that?
Addiction to drugs or alcohol.
Specifically, not, does it go beyond that?
I am not aware that it applies to other addictions, such as tobacco, for example. In terms of zoning or land use issues, it may be perhaps an employment, but related to the proposed changes here, I'm not aware that addiction has been broader than drug or alcohol.
In my neighborhood, we have the Casa Pope, which is currently considered an asset. It has children and people nearby to provide church services. But I could see some people concerned that that was allowed to go anywhere in the neighborhood.
Well, there is the proviso in the federal law that dangerous person need not be allowed by strangers in this building, that there's danger to others, and have restrictions, so that dangerous persons are not being called with a living restriction.
Seems like you've been involved in this area off and on for several years now, so...
I have that.
Appreciate your help in being successful with the state thorough standards.
Thank you.
Sixty and a half.
Okay. Oh, so are there any questions then for this claim?
I think this item has been scheduled for action, so leadership, unless leadership is appointed today, and the next leadership meeting, they could prove on again that their discretion, I don't think there's any proof, so we just hand it that way, unless there's some definite...
It's been noted.
Has it been noted?
Yeah, the policy.
Oh, okay.
Okay, great.
Okay.
But it could be continued. They've figured out, right?
So no motions necessary unless you feel you're not ready to continue with that.
I found the document online to be very informative, it's going to help me understand the issue part one, the discussion we had here, I feel like the background information is sufficient, and I'm looking forward to seeing that, if you have any.
Yes, just briefly, we heard from some of you some pretty strong feelings about zoning enforcement, and we've been asked to come to the retreat and hear to discuss enforcement. Because of the broad nature of some enforcement and the desire to narrow down the discussion with the prepared culture, so we would like to ask each of you to take, to give us a sense of where you are on zoning enforcement, everything from, and we rely on us to have the police guard, the rest of the lady that's not walking along, in case ninety years old to occupancy. So if you wouldn't mind, I can send you links, and we're going to hear it, probably takes you ten minutes, but we'd like to roughly write tomorrow, maybe ten hours, stat, and come compare, to be much more specific, with you about zoning enforcement. If there was any questions on that. Certainly, I'll give a country the last two weeks in January, I told them that the director of this one, and he's going to be part of it, and I'll be somewhat, probably by evening, because...
So we will now recess for the administration, or look for a motion to recess for the administration of the Elder Office in inauguration ceremony for council members David McNabb, David Harding, George Stewart, Stan Hira, and Gary Winterton, and then we will reconvene after that for a closed meeting. And so we'll look for a motion for that, but I think first we'll have Mr. Jones explain the rationale for a closed meeting.
Did you want me to say something?
We'll have a...
So, as you know, state law requires that meetings of the council be open to the public unless there are specific criteria for closing meetings. Those criteria are to hold a strategy session, to discuss pending or reasonably known mitigation, to discuss the purchase, sale, exchange, or lease of real property, or to discuss the character of personal, professional competence or the physical or mental health of an individual. And I'm aware of at least one item that the administration wants to bring forward, is it just the one?
It is so.
Okay. So I know there's one item that this administration would like to discuss, and it does meet those criteria. So it would be appropriate this time for a motion to be made to recess this meeting pending the slurring-in ceremony, and to, after the slurring-in ceremony, reconvene in a closed session to address that issue.
So the motion done, Mr. Stewart, for a second, second by Mr. Harding.
Eight AM here, down the hall, down the hall. At 4:30. Not very, sorry, just came up, so.